You are live.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4J, except, except, X, of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act. This is a special meeting that was advertised on 4/1/22 and is a replacement for a meeting that we thought we were going to get snowed in, and we did. We'll start off with the, uh...
(inaudible)
At this point in this meeting, is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none, see none.
Roll call.
Oh, yeah, it would be a great idea.
Berkowitz.
Here.
Jaskowitz.
Here.
Mazarella.
Here.
Parek.
Here.
Ready.
Present.
Willand.
Here.
Ira Kane.
Present.
We also have with us a board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
Any correspondence, sir? Nor?
No correspondence, no resolutions.
You got resolutions?
No, no, we did, we did those.
We did these?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, so, so we just go right to the... There's no resolutions? Okay, fine. All right then. All right, we're going to go right into the applications then. Application 2196. Janila Pandaya. 160 Allentown Road, C-Varians to construct a garage, deck, and new driveway.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? You swear a firm testimony about to give before the board's true self, you got? And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Janine 21, A-I-N-I-H-A-L, Block 276.
And you're the owner of the subject property? Thank you, you're sworn. Mr. Chairman, you witness is sworn.
Have a seat. Please.
So you're seeking variances for side yards, six foot allowed, 4.2 proposed, accessory side yard, six foot, 4.2 proposed, yards and courts, open decks, allowed 24 percent, you're proposing 25.89, building coverage 20 percent, you're proposing 25.89, and impervious coverage 40 percent, you're proposing 40.27. You are in... Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay.
Name again, they're just different order.
All right, different order, okay, gotcha. Uh, you are... This will look like a beauty. Can somebody tell me what the... It's R4, which requires a 60 by 100, and it looks like this is 80 by, 80 by 100?
Yep.
Okay, so we don't have a substandard lot. So why don't you proceed and tell us what you want to do and why you want to do it?
I want to build a garage. Right now, I don't have, but I have a side.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear you, sir. It's going to be tough with that mask, we can't hear you.
No, it's good.
Okay.
Okay, actually, I'm planning to build a garage for the car. Right now, I have a driveway, open driveway. Uh, so, so, and as, there is only the, on the side, I can build because front, I have to leave 25 feet from the main road. So I cannot build it on, in front of the current house. So I have to take this, on the side, I have to build.
Are you building a two-car garage?
Yes.
Two-car garage. And there's, there's no street parking on Allentown Road, is there?
No.
You can't, you can't park out there, can you?
Yes, no.
Busy road.
We cannot, because very narrow. And actually, it's not written that no parking, but it's not safe to park.
Did you talk to your next-door neighbor, the one who you're encroaching on the side yard setback? Have you spoken to him about the application?
Yes.
And what was his comments? Did he have any problems with it?
Uh, no, he didn't share any, like, um, he said, he was, he said okay at the time.
Okay.
I don't know.
Is he here?
No.
Is there anything along that side yard fence, bushes, anything?
No.
Nothing?
It just, uh, we have a shared, uh, fence.
There is a fence. There is a fence between you and him.
Yes.
You're not going to move? That's going to stay there?
Yeah, that's what's...
Now, do you use that area to walk around the back, or do you walk around the other side?
Uh, I use that area to walk around.
Okay, but you're not proposing any...
No, no.
Sidewalks or anything like that?
No.
Um, and four feet isn't enough to put any vegetation in there and then continue to have a path?
How will access be granted to the deck on top?
Uh, it will be from the second floor.
Have you got a window, or...
Uh, yeah, there are two windows, and one window will be converted into a door to get access to the, uh, deck on the top.
Do you plan to have like a barbecue or something up there?
Nah, no. I have backyard where I have some, uh, like, uh, what do you have there?
Favors?
Favors, yes. Favors.
It's just, just a sitting area, then?
Yes, just a sitting area.
The blacktop that you're going to keep in the front of the house, is that so you could do a catering on the driveway?
Sorry.
You're, the existing driveway, you're going to rip up?
Yes.
But you're not going to take all of it. Some of it, you're going to keep in the front of the house.
The some will be which will connect main house, uh, main...
Walkway.
Walkway to the garage.
Do you need to keep that much?
The, not all, but there will be a strip of four or six feet something high.
What you're showing now is probably 10 plus feet wide. It just doesn't seem to make any sense. As a walkway in the front of your house, I could see it for a little bit for make a catering, as you come out of the gar- garage, but you don't need all of that. And if you eliminate it, I don't know, if you need variances for, for coverage, you're only .27 over. Building coverage, that, that's not effective.
I don't know, John, if I lived on Allentown Road, I sure would have...
No, no, but he's got so much there. It's, it's like he's got...
He can, he can narrow a little bit.
He could make it half that size.
Well, whoever's going to do the construction can tell him how much he needs maybe for a safety.
I'm trying to...
Is this all driveway here? This is all?
Yeah.
Oh, this is all, and I thought this little, this little strip here was going to be the driveway.
No, here's the new plan, here.
See that?
Oh. You can cut that back, can't you?
The question is, can't you make that driveway area narrower? Because you're covering an awful lot.
Not the driveway, the extension of the driveway to the front of the house.
This part here. This one, this one, right?
How much of the existing driveway are you proposing to leave?
Uh...
You know, we got two plans. Hold yours up.
No, I have only one.
How come ours is shaded and yours isn't? And ours looks to be wider than yours.
You want to shade it one? I don't have a shade.
I don't have a shade either.
I don't have a shade either.
I don't.
Maybe he's actually...
Application 2196, right?
Yes.
2196. Can anybody help me?
Yeah, you have it.
We don't have it right now.
Is it narrow?
Ready has it also. I have it. Ready has the same thing I have.
Everybody that has the unshaded one has a narrow walkway in the front, which is where I was trying to get to.
The question... So what are we voting on?
Wait a minute. Let me find my...
Did you make it?
The question... Give me a little clearer for us, how much of the old driveway you're going to keep?
Come, come over here and look at this. Are you eliminating the areas that are excesses?
Yes.
If you're eliminating, you're just going to keep that piece in the middle?
Yes.
Which is about six feet wide, maybe? Oh, that's, that's... Okay, so that makes sense, yeah. Okay, that's, that's good. Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given? Hear none, see none. Um, there's nothing else you'd like to add, right?
No.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and see none. Someone like to make a recommendation? It doesn't seem like that significant. Outside of that couple of feet of side yard setback, the rest of the application looks pretty good.
We need to have to determine any drainage problem with additional construction.
I think that goes without saying. His coverage change is so diminished. I don't know what you'd calculate. Which way does that property flow? Does it flow out to the street, or does it flow to the back?
Flow out to the street, that's all the...
The whole property?
Yeah, like water drain, water outlet, right?
Rain drains to the...
Yes, it's out towards the...
Okay.
The downspouts, you don't want to affect the neighboring property?
No, actually, all the downspouts are in, on the driveway, so they, the water flows to the road.
That's where they are now, to where it'll be proposed also?
Yes.
Are we okay?
So the letter from our engineer... Letter from our engineer does talk about this stormwater drainage and things like that. We should look at that, too, and make sure he agrees with it. Engineer Justin's letter.
Is there a letter from engineer on this, on this application?
Very nice.
I didn't see that.
Well, he's suggesting a seepage pit, but if he's making the driveway smaller, the coverage is less of an issue. Does he still need the seepage pit?
I, I would make it, uh, any, any action taken, subject to the township engineer making the...
I'm sorry, subject to?
The township engineer making the decision.
Okay.
Make it darker.
Subject to what?
You also want to make it to the diagram that... Well, you had to put that in the resolution?
Yeah, that's...
All right.
Thank you, sir. What, what they're just saying is there's a letter from the en- township engineer, and you're going to have to comply with this.
Yes.
And you're in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay. Is that good? Okay. Well, I have a volunteer for a resolution?
Sure. Application 21:96, Janil Pandaya, 160 Allentown Road, Block 276, Lot 4, Zone R4. Recommend granting a C-Varians to construct a garage, deck, and new driveway, contrary to Section 430-10I, Section 430-35, Columns 5, 8, 10, and 13, and subject to adhering to the engineer's plan. Second, any...
Any discussion? Nor, please call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Mazarella.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Results of variances granted. We'll memorialize this at our next meeting, and then you'll be free to proceed. Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, next application, I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was a different order. Sapan Bodawala, 11 Maplewood Avenue, C-Varians to construct the one and two-story additions, open deck, porch, and walk. Good evening.
Did you raise your right hand? You swear a firm testimony about to give before the board's true self, you got? And for the record, can you state your name? And how do you spell that?
T-U-L-S-I.
And sir? And you're the owner of the subject property?
Yeah.
Thank you. You have, you may have a seat, as your sworn, Mr. Chairman, you're sworn.
Okay, so the only variance you need is building coverage of 1.26 percent. You are in an R3 zone, and you've got enough, uh, R3 is 15,000 square feet. You've got 17,000 square feet. So we're talking about, like, a, like 200 square feet?
Yeah, not even that.
Why are you here? Uh, you've got, you've got, uh, you've got a great lot there, boy. All right, um, so you're not asking for any side yard setbacks, you're not asking for any, um, pervious coverage, uh, no height, nothing. You've got one small variance that you need. So what I want you to tell me is that that 200 square feet is going to make or break this project, okay? And it is going to make or break the project, right? You don't do that 200 square feet, you're not going to get a laundry, right, or something? Any other information needed by the board? Nope?
Nope.
Now, there's a letter from the township engineer.
Anything from the engineer?
There's a letter from the engineer.
There's a letter from the, of course. Let's look at the letter from the engineer.
I just got it two days ago. I don't know.
And this says...
Bob, do you have it?
Actually, you guys do have it, I think.
All right, you got to do, you got to do, did you see this from the engineer? This, this was dated April 8th, so it's very, it's very recent. And what it says is you have to address the increase in stormwater runoff either with seepage pits or other stormwater management measures. All underground roof leaders that will be discharging, discharging into seepage pits shall be constructed using perforated pipe and placed in stone bed in accordance with township engineering details. This is a pretty standard request, okay? And I'm sure your contractor, it'll probably going to cost you a few bucks, but I'm sure your contractor can point you in the right direction. But always take into consideration that you, that you got to do what Mr. Lissa says, okay? Is that okay?
Yep.
Everything's good?
Have you seen the letter, though?
No.
You haven't seen it, but you're agreeing to what it says.
I have another copy for you.
I think you should look at it before you do.
It's, it's, it's the minimus.
I understand that.
It's the minimus. You're a hundred, you're a hundred percent right, David. You're a hundred percent right. I don't know why we don't have it.
I don't either, but I certainly can't work...
And this application was supposed to be heard a month ago.
I know.
Been having a problem with them.
Is that, you're the contractor?
I'm the architect.
You're the architect. Do you, and I'm not asking you to testify, but are you in agreement with, with...
Seepage pit?
Yeah. Okay, so your architect is in agreement? Okay?
Just for the additional runoff from the...
That's right.
Yep, it's from the house. It'll, yes, it'll, it'll tie into all the other leaders probably, and it'll all drain and...
Are there any members of the public that have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given this evening? I hear none and see none. There's nothing else you'd like to add, right? Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application?
Yep.
Did you have something? Did you have a question or something?
No, I could tell the reasons why we would need the extra space.
You're, you know, we use what's called the de minimis rule here. If, if the amount of increase that you're asking is not totally out of whack, and you're not encroaching on neighbors' properties or anything like that, you have a, I assume you have a family, you need the extra space. I, I mean, I've heard this 6,000 times. Family, bedrooms, you need a bathroom, you need this, and I, and I appreciate that, and God bless you, and I hope you enjoy living in Parsippany for as long as I've lived here, believe me, okay? Anyway, so that's, that's why I didn't go any farther, okay? Besides, I got a big agenda I'm trying to get through. Uh, okay, is there any member of the public, we asked, nobody asked questions, you're not going to have any more testimony, so is there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and see none. Is it necessary that we have, I think we've talked about the fact it's de minimis, so why not, somebody make a resolution?
Application 21:105, Sapan Bodawala, 11 Maplewood Avenue, Block 460, Lot 1, Zone R-3, to issue or grant C-Varians to construct one and two-story additions, open deck, porch, and walk expansion contrary to Section 430-35, Column 10.
Yeah, second Jaskowitz.
With engineering comments need to be included.
Still second Jaskowitz.
Any discussion? Nor, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Mazarella.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Results of variances granted. Is this like Hiawatha or Parsippany?
Parsippany.
Parsippany, okay. Very good. We'll memorialize this in a, in a next meeting, and then you'll be free to proceed. Good luck. You're quite welcome. Okay. Application 21:103, Joseph and Kelly Knoll, 6 Dogwood Lane, C-Varians to construct a one-story addition and a driveway expansion. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so we also have another letter from Mr. Lissa that we will go over. You're in an R3 zone. You're requesting a three...
I didn't swear.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony about to provide for the board's true self, you got? And for the record, you're the owners of the subject property, Joseph and, uh, Kel, K-E-L-L-I-E, K-E-N-O-L. I think you're sworn.
Okay, you're looking for a three-foot side yard setback where 10 percent, 10 feet is allowed, 16.84 percent building coverage where 15 percent is allowed, and 36.31 percent impervious coverage where 30 is allowed. You don't have a rectangle lot. You have more like a... Trapezoid? Thank you, Dr. Berkowitz.
It's not trapezoid, it's a tilted rectangle.
What is, what is the, what is the addition for?
Uh, it's a two-car garage.
Pardon?
We, we... Oh, the reason? The, well, we converted, we have my, um, my father's 95, his mother's 95, my mother's 87. They spend time with us, and, um, one of them will be staying with us. So we converted the garage to have a bathroom there that you can go into a wheelchair, because my father's in a wheelchair, um, and he can't do any stairs. So that's why we're converting.
So we converted the existing attached garage into a bedroom with a, with a built-in bathroom.
Okay.
Uh, and so now we just want to add another garage to fill the purpose that the existing garage that we converted.
I'm looking at the drawing, and the corner of the garage that meets a lot next door seems to be pretty far back from the neighbor's house. That, that's, that's a correct statement, right?
That's true.
Have you discussed this with your next-door neighbor?
Yes.
And they don't have any problems?
No.
And they're not here tonight to object, right?
No.
Just asking. Okay, and so that, that's the only hang-up I have, because the impervious coverage...
So this addition is solely for a garage?
Yes.
Will be nothing else in it?
No.
It'll be heated, it'll be just a garage?
No, it's just a garage.
No, no heating systems, no, uh, no plumbing, nothing like that?
Everything will blend with the house?
Yeah.
The siding that's there will blend?
Yeah.
Now, you say you converted your existing garage into a living area.
Yes.
There's no indication that this is a two-family house, right? You just have...
No.
Extended family living.
Right, exactly.
I'm sorry, I have to ask that question, because we don't approve two-family houses.
No, there's, there's no kitchen or anything like that in there.
That's, that's the buzzword.
Kitchen and a small bathroom.
Okay.
And the other question I have, I think this is my, it's a nice-sized garage. Reason you're here is because the new garage is encroaching within the 10-foot limit on the property line, right? The three foot from your neighbor?
Yeah.
Okay, so my question is, can that garage be made just a bit smaller, so we don't have that much of an issue?
You know, we've gone back and forth.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Oh, yeah, we went back and forth with it, and for us to have, like, my car and then a larger car that has the capability for the wheelchair and everything?
Oh, you have one of those vans?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, let's talk about Mr. L- have you seen Mr. Lissa's, uh, April 8th? Probably not.
Uh, yes.
You have this one from April 8th from Mr. Lissa?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, we're getting back to the conversation of roof leaders, so we'd seepage pits constructed with perforated pipe placed in stone in accordance with township engineering details, unless otherwise directed by the township engineer. Um, so you will, you will properly grade everything, you will, you will follow this, you'll have your contractor know that he has to do this with your, your leaders and everything?
He had discussions about that, and, uh...
He has, we can show him the letter.
Okay.
He does mention that the possible need for a soil moving permit.
And how do we find that out?
You'll make the decision. You agree to be with the engineer and...
Number three?
Yes, of course.
Number three?
Including the comment from Chaz.
Mr. Holloway.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, what was the comment?
Says number four. His number four says, "The soil moving permit is recor-" am I on the right one?
Maybe.
No, I'm on the wrong one. I'm sorry, I got the wrong letter. Somebody, somebody pick it. Uh, Chaz, ta- talk about it, because you got, you seem to have it, I don't have it.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, do you have a copy of the, uh, letter that dated March 1st, 2012?
Yes.
Okay, so it talks about, you have to deal with township engineer regarding drainage, but also there's a possibility on the amount of the soil to be moved, they might need a, a major soil permit. And that's something that you would have to discuss with the township engineer also.
Oh, okay, yes. Oh, so we, we were going through with our architect and, and the contractor through this, and they understood and that we would need to work. I don't know the details, but yeah.
Okay, so it looks like 100 cubic yards is the, is the tipping point, so you have to evaluate with the township engineer what's going on.
So you agree to all three, the final, as built as well, they'll need the survey?
Yes.
Okay. They agree, Chairman?
Okay, uh, any members of the public, any questions of these witnesses on testimony given? I hear none and see none. There's nothing else you'd like to add, right? No? Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and see none. Do we have a, we, we have a, somebody make a comment on the three feet, please.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, not only de minimis in nature, but it's for a good purpose. You're helping out and taking care of elderly parents. What's better than that? So I will be recommending, voting for it, and I will be voting for it.
Mr., uh, Willand, were you going to do a resolution?
No, Scott's going to do that, sir.
Scott's going to do the resolution.
I will hear.
Scott's on the way.
Application 21:103, Joseph and Kelly Knoll, 6 Dogwood Lane, Block 92, Lot Number 8, Zone R-3, to issue or grant a C-Vare- variance to construct a one-story addition, driveway expansion contrary to Section 430-35, Column 5, 10, and 13, with, uh, considering the engineering, engineer's report.
Second Jaskowitz.
Any discussion? Nor, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Mazarella.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Hurricane.
Yes. Results of variance is granted, we memorialize this in two weeks, or one week, actually. And then you'll be free to proceed.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome, enjoy.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, application 2198. Bun and Jun Lee Chin, Chin, 103 Fox Hill Road, C variance to legalize two patios and a walk.
Can you raise your right hand, so you swear a firm testimony about to give before the board's true self you got? And for the record, you are Bun and Jun Lee Chang, and the owners of the subject property. Thank you, you're sworn, you may have a seat. Mr. Chairman, you're sworn.
Okay, so you're in R3 zone. R3 zone. Yeah, it's rainbow lake.
Rainbow lake, right?
Definitely the lake.
Are you on the lake?
Yes, my patio is right by the lake.
So you don't have 15,000 square feet, I'm sure. Right?
More than.
You got more than 15,000 square feet? You got a big piece of property?
Yeah.
Wow.
Actually three lots.
Wow, you're lucky.
Yeah.
Normally, when you get them, they got like, you know, two feet by six feet.
I think on the thing, on the thing, it's like 20,000 square.
Oh, wow, okay. Oh, my God, yeah, I can see that now. And is there like multiple buildings here, or what?
Just one building, one garage, detached garage and a single family home.
Rest of the patios are big. Got a shed there?
Oh.
And a shed.
A lot of patios.
What are these patios made of? Says pavors.
Pavors.
Are they dry-laid or are they in concrete?
Dry-laid, not concrete.
So water can drain between them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the driveway is crushed stone? Do you have a blacktopper?
The driveway by the garage is paved with two. The walk-
Says brick in the front, and it says crushed stone for the majority of it.
There's another one on the, in front of that, peaver driveway.
Oh, okay, yep.
So all this is there, which you did without proper permits, and now you're here to get it legalized, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I did not know if you had permission to do that.
Let's talk about, let's talk about the big driveway that comes in, up to the, like, I guess in the front of the house.
Those driveway are existing when we bought the house. We bought the house about two years ago.
Yeah.
It was existing, it was there. I did not do that work.
Do you use them?
Yeah.
What do you do, just pull up to the front door?
We park three cars there.
And the garage, what do you do, pull in there and park cars there too?
Yeah, you could do that, or I use it for storage.
What, the garage?
Yeah.
So how many cars do you need to park on your property, you think?
Three.
Three. What is the extra crushed stone parking there, what's that?
Which ones? The one that the question, the number six, that one's then removed.
Oh, okay, it's just showing on-
They say we move out, so I remove it when the engineers show up. I remove it, I don't pass grass.
It's grass? You're going to plant grass?
You've got to plant grass.
I remove it, if you go up, I remove it.
There should be two. Go next page.
And you're saying six has been cut back?
Yes, the one closest to the front door.
Okay.
Just looking.
That looks like the same shape as we have.
Yeah.
That big driveway in the front, you removed some of it, all of it?
All of it. You mean the question?
Number six.
Yeah, that's gone.
When they made the calculation for-
They included that.
They included that as part of the coverage?
You can't see this.
That's what I'm looking at, their numbers.
It's been removed, at first it was 36.76 coverage percentage.
Yeah.
After I removed that, now it's only 26.64.
Okay. All right.
So had they not included that, you wouldn't even be here, is that correct?
Well, probably for the patio, because I need to legalize the patio.
Now, you built the patios?
Yeah, myself, yeah.
You want to tell me more about that? We're kind of grinning here, you built patios, I'm sure they're very nice patios, okay? But now you want us to approve something you did that isn't within the zoning requirement, so tell me why.
Well, I had a lot of family members, that's why I bought the lake house. So I wanted like nice and clean. Before we bought the house, we put a lot of money in there. And then second year, I tried to do the outside. So I was looking at the lake, I saw that my neighbors, they all have like nice patios. So I just go and do it. And it's turned out really nice.
I'm sure it is.
Do you have any issue with water runoff to either side, or?
I know, because it goes to the river. It's like a drain like this.
Slips right down to the lake?
I also, my wife, she likes to play on like vegetable.
Okay.
So we allow that to go down and plant the box. So I have two rain barrels to collect rainwater.
Have your neighbors complained about your patio?
No, they like, they love it.
Yeah.
So why are you here, then? Did somebody, I don't know how to do this.
Well, there's, somebody in our neighborhood, they just like to complain, so I don't know. Either way, I need to legalize it, I know I eventually-
Thank you.
And I figured there's a lot of areas, a lot of quest areas too, so I figured I had to stay.
Thank you. It's difficult for us all to, to have somebody say, "I didn't know I wasn't supposed to do that." And then they want us to legalize it, okay?
Yeah, I know.
That's why you're here.
Want to get rid of this.
Yeah, so you got a real part of it.
It's funny, these letters from the engineer are very similar, everyone, you just-
Change your name.
Oh, that's true.
He's got the letter memorized, he just retypes the top.
Gotcha.
All right, I have a question. Mr. Chang?
Yeah?
The two pavour patios, okay?
Yeah.
They're close to your neighbor's property. I guess on the other side of your neighbor's property, is there anything that's theirs that's near your patios? Like their patios or your buildings?
No.
Because there's nothing here telling us that.
It's fairly wooded, isn't it?
It's very wooded area.
Yeah.
We look at the pictures.
So the patios being so close to your side yard and rear yard are not going to have any impact at all on your neighbors, correct?
No, no, I talked to them, no.
Any other questions by the board?
How did this get here? Somebody come by and say-
Somebody complained, a neighbor.
He said a neighbor complained.
I don't know, just one day the-
Code enforcement.
He show up at my door, say, "You did all this?" And oh, yeah, and then he just say someone, and he did that to me.
Okay.
So I just, okay, I want to legalize it.
Thank you.
Then go to the deposit, I even hire a supplier, we pay all the money. I remove the crushed stone. I did everything that you guys asked me to.
So since they went there, you made that decision, take out the area to-
Yes.
Help comply.
Yeah, he told me, maybe you don't need to remove the crushed stone.
But you did it anyway.
I say, I don't want no more of that, just get rid of it, you know?
Okay.
We're out.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given? I hear none and see none. Is there anything else you'd like to add? No? Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and see none. Can we go to a vote?
Sure.
Yeah. Somebody make a recommendation then. I think the applicant has tried to mitigate the situation and made good effort. That's my observance. The guys in purple over there are shaking their heads, okay?
Thumbs up, sir. We have no opposition from the neighbors in compliance.
Let's go to resolution, so I do a resolution, okay?
Application-
Whatever is done has to be in accordance with Mr. Lizza's letter also.
Yeah.
You have to follow him.
Okay, go ahead. Application 21:98, Bun and Jun Lee Chang, 103 Fox Hill Road, block 109, lot 20, Zone R3, recommend granting a C variance to legalize two patios and a walk contrary to section 430-35, columns eight and nine, and agreeing to adhere to the town engineer's requests. Second, ready?
Any discussion? Nora called a roll?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Paree.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Hurricane.
Yes. Results of variance is granted, we memorialize this next week and you'll be free to proceed.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You don't have to proceed, they've already done it, so you're not being legal.
You can enjoy it.
I stand up, stammer a comment, David, I'm sorry.
Good luck.
All righty, let's call case 2199, George Bezanski, One Christine Drive, C variance to legalize a six-foot-high fence.
Sir, could you raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony about to give before the board's true self you got? And for the record, you are George Bezanski, and the owner of the subject property.
George Bezanski.
Yes. Thank you, sir, you're sworn.
So you put up a fence without a zoning permit?
Correct.
Why don't you tell us, tell us a little bit about it? Why don't you tell us a little bit about it?
Where is the fence? We've got surveys here, but it doesn't show-
It's all Fairview in the side yard, on Fairview.
So the fence is on Fairview facing?
Yeah, it, yes.
But his address is Christie Drive?
Yeah.
It's a corner property.
Got it, so you have two front yards.
Yep.
You have two front yards.
Two front.
Does, does the-
Real large front yard.
Does the fence run along the roadway or only on the side property line?
Only on the side property.
So it's behind a hedge?
Correct, the hedges are mine.
The hedge is yours?
Yes.
Okay. So the variance is for that piece that's in the front yard?
Well, it's, yeah, it's about 130 feet of footage.
You have a front yard requirement of 40 feet, I think it is.
That's correct.
So that's the only piece of the fence that's in violation. Six-foot high, right?
Six-foot high.
Okay. Only the 40-foot piece is in violation.
So this is the only fence in the section?
No, it's not.
That section's in the front yard.
You can have a six-foot-high fence in your side and rear yard.
Okay.
So the front, the piece that runs along the street, that piece is, not along the street, but perpendicular the street, for 40 feet of that fence is the violation.
On Christie Drive? Christine Drive?
No, on Fairview.
How close is the, how close is the fence to the right away?
It looks like it comes right up to it.
Yes.
What is the type of fence, is it one of these-
DC plastic fence?
Straight, flat, no lattice work on the top, just six-foot high?
Six-foot high, and that's just my neighbor's fences.
That's why you put it up.
So he's got fences in the back of his yard, and yours connects to his?
My next-door neighbor who fronts on 202 South of the road, town defense to be aesthetically pleasing, and probably it improves the valuation of his property.
Okay. Okay.
Is the fence behind them? You're at the corner of Christine Drive and Fairhaven Drive, and you're only one house from 202.
That's correct. And that house is also a corner property.
How long's the fence been there?
Probably since the construction of the house. I think it probably goes back to 1968.
Your fence?
No, I don't think that's true.
Your neighbor's fence?
September 27th.
No, not my neighbor's fence, originally it was a stockade fence.
So you replaced something that was already there?
Correct. The storm and people of last year, just a backstory, blew down a lot part of the stockade fence. Took six months, we get the PVC fence because of supply chain problems.
Okay, so you had a six-foot stockade, six-foot-high stockade solid fence. The storm took it down. You replaced it with a six-foot solid fence after the storm, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And now you learned that six-foot-high on the store, on the street front is a violation of our code, correct?
Right. So my attitude was after hearing-
We don't care about, I'm sorry, but the point being, you lived there all those years and had a six-foot-high fence before that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But they exist.
The state committee thought that there was a grandfather clause on the stockade fence, it turned out there wasn't.
No.
So I made a mistake, oops. And so I decided that honesty is the best policy after the construction of the fence. And the best economy, and complying.
So you never had a violation issue to, issue to you?
No.
You did this on your own?
That's correct.
Great.
Okay.
Does it sit, it sits higher than the hedges, or it's along the same height line as the hedges?
The hedges are a little higher.
Okay. Yeah, I'm looking at a picture, it has, the picture on Google Earth shows the old stockade fence on it, so the satellite hasn't come around yet.
And I was under pressure, because when the fence went down, the white-tailed deer started to storm my property.
Should have bought a shotgun instead.
So the pressure was on. And it was bad.
Got you. So you have the street, the hedge, and then your fence, correct?
There's my property, the hedges, and then the property line.
Do you see the fence from the street, or do you just see the hedges?
Only if, you can, if you look to the right along Fairhaven.
But from the front?
From the front, well, it doesn't, the fence, the fence is perpendicular to Fairhaven. About 100 feet to back. So you're riding along 202 South, and you turn your head to the right, which you shouldn't be doing. You know, rubbernecking. I enjoy, you know, I appreciate the response, but it might be dangerous. That's basically, those are basically the views.
And if you had to correct that, it'd be a major complication for you, is that correct?
And your neighbor wouldn't be happy either.
No, he wouldn't be. It might force him to think of a new plan. He has a child, toddler, he also saw it as a protective measure.
Okay, thank you.
Keep his toddler safe, partially safe in this.
Let me just give you the board, and I understand all the circumstances, I'm just going to make a public statement here, that we do not approve six-foot-high stockade fences. We will go five-foot where the fence is, four-foot solid and one foot open in certain circumstances. Now, your situation is a little different, because if you came to me right now, we would not give you a six-foot fence. I guarantee that. Unless you told me that you have a problem with a herd of elephants coming down your street and worry they're going to come in your backyard. That said, I am not opposed to this based on the history of the property, but it doesn't bother me. It bothers me that people want to put up a six-foot-high, solid, white fence. Is there a problem in this town? Are we trying to keep people, you don't sunbathe in the backyard or anything like that, that you're concerned about people? And that's what bothers me. And I will never approve a six-foot-high solid fence unless there's extreme, extenuating circumstances. And I'll tell you, there's a woman in Lake Hiawatha, on Lake Shore Drive, who put up a six-foot-high fence without a permit. And she gave us some half-baked story.
Hmm.
Couldn't get the contractor, couldn't find them. But guess what, she now has a four-foot-high fence, okay? Because we made her cut it down. What's that?
And they're behind the trees.
Yeah, we made her, we made her cut it down to four feet, so. And that's just for public information, for anyone who is watching this on TV. Don't come to us with a six-foot-high fence unless you've got real severe situation. Is there any other questions by the board?
I'd just like to comment, may I?
Yeah, sure.
Well, motivated me was the fact that I actually witnessed directly the white-tailed deer jumping the hedges, which are seven feet.
A deer will not jump a solid fence. It will, he'll dump this, he will not jump something he can't see the other side of. And a five-foot-high fence, he can't see over. He can't see over. Because, believe me, my backyard, when I put the fence up many, many, many years ago, I've never had deer again. Because they won't jump the fence.
Well, that's correct.
Yeah.
That's why I was holding.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? I hear nothing, seen none, you, nothing else you'd like to add, right?
No, just that, uh, I, uh, would very much like, uh, positive discretion in the approval of the evidence.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear nothing, seen none. What's, what's the story, guys, girls, not only guys?
Well, I, 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 I agree with you, Chairman. Normally, we would not approve this. I think the gentleman has come forward on his own to do this. Uh, he has a fence, but, I mean, a shrub between his fence and the road. Uh, he replaced the six foot high fence. Uh, in this case, I think I would be in favor about giving him a fence.
Thank you, Mr., uh, well, is somebody firm a resolution then, unless there's an opposition?
Application twenty-one colon ninety-nine, George Bezdansky, one Christine Drive, block one sixty-six, lot fifty-four, zone R three. Recommend granting a C variance to legalize a six foot high solid fence contrary to section four thirty dash eleven A and B.
Second, ready.
Any discussion? More, please call the hall.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Marie.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willings.
Yes.
Hurricane.
Yes. Results of variance is granted, enjoy your fence.
Thank you very much.
If you, if you get any mold on your fence, any green stuff, there's a product that, that they sell at Home Depot.
Yeah.
It's called thirty-second something or thirty-minute something. You just take it and spray it, it's got a Clorox blend, and the mold just comes right, right off it. Don't power wash it, it's too much trouble. Nah, it's too much work. Get that spray and then you just take it with a hose.
Vinegar does.
Make sure you feed the deer since they're not gonna get to your garden.
No, you can't feed any animals in this. Okay, application twenty-one colon one hundred, Happy Paul's, ninety-nine Lake Shore Drive. Zone R four, D variance for business use in a residential zone and storage of deceased animals. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody.
Mr. King, they were sworn, right?
No, they have, they haven't been sworn. I was just, I was waiting for the attorney to, um, prove a name on, uh, her appearance on the record.
Thank you, Mr. King. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Bruce Murray Stone Doherty, with the law firm of Javber Bound and Board App at three seventy Chestnut Street in Union, New Jersey. Here on behalf of the applicant, Happy Paul's, in regards to a D one variance in regards to a very limited use just for the storage of deceased pets for a limited period of time within a special freezer in the garage at my client's home, which is located at ninety-nine Lake Shore Drive. And to my right, I have, um, my client, who is a veterinarian, and we'd like to have her sworn in, Dr. Mini.
Ma'am, if you could raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board's truth to help you God. And for the record, do you state and spell your name?
A, a, a Mandeeep Mini.
A, M?
Mandeeep, M-A-N-D-E-E-P, last name Mini, M-I-N-I.
Would you please speak into the microphone?
Mandeeep Mini.
And you're the owner of the subject property and the owner of the business?
Yes.
And the business is, uh, run out of that property?
No. I'm a house call veterinarian. I go to people's home for the.
Oh, okay. Uh, you're sworn.
Okay, thank you so much, counsel. Um, so why don't we start there? Can you explain to the board exactly the nature of your business?
I'm a, I'm a house call veterinarian. I have been a vet for fourteen years. I used to work in ER and regular general practice. And then I felt like a need that people need a lot of house call vets because there are a lot of old pets who cannot travel. The cats hate traveling. And, you know, sometimes pet owners need me because the pets get very sick. And there are big pets who need to be euthanized because they are not doing very well. And people need my services. I work long hours, sometimes, you know, I, like, I, yesterday I worked like until eleven, twelve because I don't like people crying, saying my pet is suffering and nobody's coming to help me. You can see my schedule. So sometimes, you know, I work daytime and go to people's homes, sometimes late nights, like eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock. Sometimes I go there because people need me. And being a vet and being, seeing people suffering, I have to help them. So I, I do regular visits and I do sick visits and I help them passing, going in peace if they are suffering. So, and, you know, my first goal is when I go to people's home is that if I can help them, you know, because I'm also a chiropractor and acupuncturist, just for pets, not for humans. And I, my first goal is to help them. If I can save somebody, that would be my first thing. But there would be times when we know pet is suffering and they need to pass peacefully, then I help them with that. And it can be five o'clock in the morning, it could be twelve o'clock at night, it could be, it's, it's a very, very emotionally draining profession. You don't even know what we go through every day, see, watching people, emotions. I, I'm sorry, I'm, I get emotional because, you know, just being a kind of, of, like, professional, man.
So just for clarity, though, you don't see any pets or, um, any clients at your home? Your business is a hundred percent.
Yes.
You're on call and you go to your client's home, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And just for clarity, as you indicated, you do all types of veterinarian services? You do regular wellness checks? It's not like every time you go on call unconditionally, you're left with that tough decision of having to.
No, I, I take care of everything. Uh, my first goal would be if I can save somebody, that's what I would do. And, you know, a lot of times, a lot of times people say, oh, my pet cannot walk, can, so we need to put him to sleep. I, because I'm an acupuncturist and holistic vet also, I sometimes have done acupuncture chiropractic and pet starts walking and I've given life to them. So my first goal would be to save the pet.
So the address of your business is where?
So because I have to give some address, so I have to just put it like when I, you know, uh, like, I, for my, when it's on the website, there is no address. It just says Happy Paul's House Calls, there's no business.
But a business has to have an address. So what do you give as your address?
So, you know, because I travel to people's homes, so I don't have to give my address.
No, you, you want to big, bring the animals back, the dead animals back to your house.
Oh.
That, that's why you're here.
Yes.
So where, where, where is your house?
In ninety-nine Lake Shore Drive, for Sydney.
That's where you're gonna bring the dead animals? That's your business address? And you're gonna have a refrigerator there or a freezer?
So I have a special freezer. I don't drink all the time, pets, because I work with a license, two licensed crematories.
You have a freezer there and you put the animals in the freezer. How long do they stay there?
So like you, if I have to, it would be only overnight.
Or just for clarity.
Where, where do, where do you transport them after?
It's a, I work with two licensed crematory, mostly I work with the Clif, uh, Final Gift in Clifton. That's, and that's where they will be transported.
How often would you have an animal in the freezer?
It's like, you know, few times when, like, if it's late, uh, like, late time when all the crematories are closed. Because if you understand.
So you might have two in there at one time?
It's possible.
Three, possible. But they're only gonna be there from the time you bring them there till you get up the next morning and take them somewhere.
Because the only reason is that, you know, they, when I euthanize somebody's pet, they have given, you, you understand. I'm pretty sure you, most of you have pets, how close they are to you, they are, they're your life. And people are giving their life to me. I have to be responsible to ha, take care of them when I have.
I have a question. How many of these pets do you usually take to your house a month? One, maybe?
Like few, I've nev, like, I've never thought.
When you say few, is it more than three?
It's possible, yeah.
So is it less than seven?
I would, like, you know, sometimes when, uh, I just haven't, never thought, because it could be a little more than seven too, because I don't, uh.
How many a year? In, in twenty twenty-one, how many pets? Because that you should have, I think you probably have some type of, of certificate that you should have to show that, that.
Like, most of the time, as I said, I.
How many in twenty twenty-one?
For like, which I brought.
If you had the average.
That you stored at home?
For the whole year. How many animals did you bring back to your house temporarily until you took them to the crematory? They're trying to get an idea of how many times a month you have to bring animals back.
Maybe forty, fifty.
Forty or fifty?
Yeah.
For the whole year, right?
So about almost four, about four a, a month?
One a week, one a week.
So i- isn't there a way that you can have a, an agreement with a, another licensed veterinarian to, to either have this freezer at there and pay them a, a bit of rent?
The problem is most of the place is closed in the evening and they won't, they won't allow me, like, you know, it's their liability to giving. Even, and I don't want to keep them in like a storage place, you know, it's your baby. You are giving me the responsibility to take care of your baby. I'm not gonna put it in, say, if something, if somebody steals. People do private cremations, paw prints, all those things. I don't want to put it in like a storage place.
How about a twenty-four hour animal hospital, could you?
They, they, it's not easy. It's not that.
But have you ever, have you?
I've talked to them, yeah. It's because they have their own problems, they have their own pets to take in care of, they won't allow me to do it. I have talked to AERA, which is another emergency clinic, and you know, you know, they don't allow.
Just a little technicality, having pets, and, and so I respect what you're doing, going to people's homes, okay? And that's a, a nice professional service. Having said that, uh, when our pets have passed in our home, they've stayed there for the night, then we've taken them someplace else. So what you're doing is you're going to a person's home, euthanizing the pet, because they're in pain and discomfort, and then taking the pet away so the family doesn't have to deal with the remains of the pet in the house, you know? Okay? It's pretty, it's a pretty extraordinary service, okay? And, and so that's why you're looking for this exception, okay? So you bring that pet and then, I guess, I'm confused as to, you know, the need for that process. I mean, I, I think it's commendable, okay? Uh, but as far as a business practice, uh, I'm, I'm not sure I'm fully understanding the need for you to personally do that. I, I know you're trying to help the family and that's commendable again, but there's a lot of good causes out there that we can't approve businesses, uh, in a home, uh, for that kind of purposes.
Couldn't you rent a storefront or something so that you wouldn't have to break? Because the, the act is noble, but it's.
Her problem is she's not committed in any zone.
She's not committing any zone. If, if she wanted to rent a ten by twelve office, it's pretty hard to come by in this.
Really?
Yeah. The only building I know of got coming down about four years ago. It was mine.
She would have to have an agreement, uh, sublease some space in an existing vet.
And you would have multiple.
If she was, if she had a space in a vet's business, then she could be considered a customer in accessory use.
Yeah.
And that would not have a problem. This is.
And you know.
Do you, do you have a, do you have a backup generator in your house? If, whole house generator? Do you have a whole house generator? If your power went out, what happens?
Luckily, so, like, we are thinking of getting it, but luckily not.
I asked the question, do you have a backup generator? No. So if there is hurricane Sandy and you're stuck with animals in that ref, refreezer and you can't get them anywhere, what are we gonna do?
It's a good, like, so you gave me a good thought, I should get a generator.
I, I have a question too. If you bring the pet in on Friday, still it stays in the freezer for just one day or it may take three days, holidays?
Crematories are open on Saturday, they are just not open on Sunday.
So it can be two, two days then?
Like, no, mostly, if most, they say if it is Saturday late night, Saturday night or something, then that's up to Monday. But most of the time, it's the next day.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is there are chances that it may stay for a couple of days.
Like, just what, like, you know.
Only on Sunday.
If it's Saturdays, because Sundays, they are closed.
And when you take the, the deceased animal from your vehicle and you put it into the freezer, if a kid's walking by, is he seeing you carrying a dead?
No, because it's.
No, explain to them what you've put the animals in.
No, I have a special crematory bags with the zipper. Like, you know, I make, we get our own special bags and we put them in that before transportation.
Not exposed to?
No, 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 yeah.
And they're not seafood, they're not like what somebody would think of like body bag? These are special.
Special bags, which, which are waterproof.
Do not know what's inside the bag.
Yeah, yeah.
So how do we know that this came to us? How did that, how do we know that this is happening?
Why are you here?
My understanding is, I mean, the client can tell, is that, um, at, before they had the freezer in the garage, they actually had a shed. And the neighbor who is adjacent to them saw them carrying a, a large bag to the shed and was wondering what was going on and called the town. And when the town came out, they found out that inside the shed, they had freezer and they explained to them that you can't have the shed with the freezer, that that use is not permissible. So therefore, they moved the freezer into the garage immediately to get it out of the shed. Also, they had electric running out to the shed, which is not a good idea either. And they put everything into the garage and made the application to come and run it forward. So a, again, though, just to be clear, with, uh, the doctor's practice, this is a very small component of the practice. And the problem is, as Mr. Chairman and, and your plan already indicated, there's nowhere in the town. We explored other uses. When you deal with other veterinarians, especially in light of what happened with COVID, and this has become, I mean, the adoption rates went through the.
Yeah, I, if you guys, if you don't, like, you know, when COVID started at the peak, everybody was like, I don't have to get out of the home. I was the only one. All the veterinary practices were closed. I was the only one. I didn't, I didn't think about my family or anybody. I was in up, I was like a, like a firefighter. I was going to people's home, wearing double mask, taking care of the pets. Not only for this purpose, but for regular visits also when everybody, even the vet clinics were closed. I was like my, I have two small kids. I was, I, I was, but for me, I wanted to take care of them. So I was, I got very busy just taking care of the pets because people needed me at that time. And I never thought about my life. I was thinking about people's.
You're doing something very noble, but I gotta tell you, if I was living next door to you, I'm not sure I'd want that.
I think you need to explore and explain to the board the contacts you tried to with different veterinarians.
Hardship.
To, that nobody would, uh, agree to have that use in their building. Because other than that,
But, but if this application was granted, you're, you're allowing a, a business to operate in this house. So you're not defining this just to a freezer, it's animals in the garage.
It's a business in a residential zone. You're operating a business in the zo, in the zone if you, if we gave, gave you a variance, come on.
You don't have, you don't have any kind of office space where you work out of? You are running the business from your home currently? That's a whole nother topic.
Is there any other business in the vicinity of ninety-nine Lake Shore Drive? Is there a real estate office? Is there an accounting office? Is there a lawyer?
No.
Is there a delicatessen? There's nothing, it's purely residential area.
Yes, and you can see my calendar. I like, like, I have, like, today also, I worked until six thirty and I was like really dead before I came here because, and that also, I stopped at six thirty because I had to come here. I, if I could, uh, people needed me today also. Yesterday, I worked, like, you know, it just meant telling you that I'm just go door to door helping people. I go.
It's, it's, it's all very good, but we're dealing with a, we're dealing with a variance, a D variance that requires special proofs. Where's your planner? Do you have a planner?
Well, we were in a shark this evening, doing, because we had some of the, um, also witnesses who are here in support of the application. And then we were gonna ask to carry for the planner who's not here with us.
You are gonna have a planner.
You know, because we originally, as you know, we're two weeks ago, we had planner schedules. I mean, Mr. Tadlos knows, it's a little hectic this time of year with the planners and he was triple booked tonight.
Okay, I, where, where I'm at, and again, I think we're all saying, uh, thank you for a noble cause. But frankly, the piece of your business, one piece of the business, when you euthanize an animal, the only choice you have when other options are not open, so it's one or two o'clock in the morning on Saturday, you are bringing those pets back to your house, okay? Can you not find a more viable or acceptable location to take the deceased animal for a period of time? I, I'm just saying, you're, you're shaking your head, I'm just suggesting your planner and some other people. Because I don't think we're gonna, I would not approve the use of your home for that purpose, okay? That business in your, under the current testament. I approve of what you're doing, wholeheartedly, and I hope to continue. And I just wonder what people do that don't have you when their pet died. Because most of them have the pet living at home or staying at home and they take them and they can be cremated or whatever the next day or two. So there has to be another solution to you bringing the body bags back to your house and putting them in a freezer, okay? If you can't come up with that, I, I will be supporting the application.
And so let's say you weren't around. The pet owner would wait a day. Unfortunately for the pet, they would wait a day and they would have the pet euthanized the following day and it would be able to be taken to the proper place. It's sad, but.
But the pet would be suffering whole life.
And I think, I, I never had a pet in my whole life. I just, my son rescued a dog, we had it, put it down. I, I was wrecked. But the fact of the matter is.
If your pet is seizuresing, if your pet bleeding from the nose, if the tumor is bleeding. I don't think somebody can wait whole night to watch their pet suffering, it's very painful.
I could only imagine, but I still.
I've been there and done this, okay? And I agree with you, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I would call you in a heartbeat.
Yep.
I think you have to demonstrate because of that the veterinarian industry that's in this area refuses to have her as a renter or of space. Because otherwise, I don't think you can support this variance.
I mean, respectfully.
I'm just making a comment.
With the planner, I mean, under the B G C, you know, which would be, you know, um, obviously.
A vet?
Well, the, obviously, it's not inherently beneficial use, I agree with you. But we were gonna go down some of that hardship, obviously, what Mr. Tadlos is saying. The point of the speaking was, and I hope, Mr. Williams, that you will keep an open mind as far as the rest of the testimony you'll hear.
I, I have an open mind.
Sway, sway you, I don't know. Um, but with that being said, um, I do have additional, the reason we're here. Um, but with that being said, um, I do have additional, the reason we're here tonight is we have additional witnesses that are able to testify this evening, as you know.
What are they gonna testify to? Like, these other witnesses?
She has witnesses that are in support for you.
Those are people that testify in, at the end of the meeting. If you were, I ask if you're in support of the application. If they're not gonna give technical or some business testimony, we, we hear them at the end.
Okay, well, they were gonna be fact, this is as to the operation of how her practice works.
Are they professionals? Are, are they, are they degreed or professionals, or are they just neighbors, or what?
You just said they're clients and they come to her home? I thought she didn't have clients.
No, that she went to their home. So they were gonna be fact witnesses as to confirming that.
That she's very compassionate, that it was a need and everything. That has no.
That the practice is not at her house, because my understanding was.
We're not questioning that.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's concerned about that.
That's fine. She testified it wasn't at her house. That, that, that's, that's fine.
I, at this point, I wanna open it up for questions in public, if there's any. And I'm gonna be very specific to members of the public, because I'm sure there's people here for this application. This is your opportunity to come forward and ask questions of the witness on the testimony given this evening. And I'm gonna be very caution, I'm gonna caution you that this is not the time to make a statement. If you have a problem with this, or you're very happy with this, I don't wanna hear it right now. I wanna know if you have a question of this witness on, has, on the testimony they've given this evening. Is there any member of the public that has a question of this witness on the testimony given this evening? Please come forward.
Is there a microphone? Ma'am, uh, just for the record, can you state your name?
Mary Priz.
You're good.
John.
He's good.
Uh, Mary Prizicky, do I give my address here?
Yes, you could.
273 Marcelo Road, and I am here because I am a member of the Lake Precipity Property Owners Association, which is across the street, the property, and, um, that's the reason why I'm here. But I'd like to ask, um, the applicant, that what does she do with the waste, the medical waste, the, the, the needles, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? Does it go into the regular garbage stream or not? Because, because there's a lot of garbage that we see around your property.
So I have, no, so I have, like, I have tie up with the, like, a medical company. So we dispose all the, there's a special boxes where the, all the needles and everything go in that box. And then they, like, you know, the cremi, we, this is taken by a special company. It's called Abby Glen. They dispose all the.
So they come to your home?
Or we try, like, we transport them over there.
Or you said, or?
We have, we, we have to transport, because they give us the bins, red bins, where we have to throw all, I have a big bin, where I have to throw all the medical waste, and then.
And that's stored at your house, too?
Another evidence you're doing business in your house.
Right.
I, like, you know, that, that can be stored in my car also.
But it's not.
I can always store it in my car. That's like, you know. It's just a trash can, it's kind of similar to trash can, but it's a special trash can. Obviously, I cannot throw it on the road, or I can always put it in my car if that, if you think that's a problem.
How, how big is the can? Will it fit in the car?
Yeah, I can, I can get a smaller one and put it in my car if that's a problem.
So you're saying it is stored on the property? It is stored on the property?
I can, as I said, if there's an issue, I can always store it in my car. I can put, I get a smaller bin. I can put it in my.
Another evidence that you're doing business in your house. You're doing a commercial business in your house.
From that.
Like, what difference does it, I'm sorry, I don't want to be, but I would say, if I have, like, any kind of a trash, I put it in my trash can versus that box. It's not, it, it's not a business. It's just throwing the garbage. But it's a medical waste, so it's like a needle, so I have to have a special, like, I don't want to mix it with the regular garbage. So it's kind of that. If you have a recycling bin or something, you separate the, and then, you know, those kind of, if you, if you work in an office, you bring some stuff in your.
You're, 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 you're just dragging on and on and on. We just want a simple answer to the questions, okay? We understand all the, 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 the good that you do, okay? The problem is, you've got neighbors that are concerned about what's going on in their residential neighborhood. This is not a commercial district. You have to provide special reasons as to why you're operating business. Because you're operating a business. You got the storage of the, of the, of the refri- freezer. Now you're telling us you've got stored containers for the medical waste there? Is that true? Is that what you said? I think I understood.
Yeah, it's a bin, special, like, a smaller.
And you have no other business address. You don't have an office, or a lab, or anything, anyplace else.
So do you just store the medicine that you bring with you? Do you store that in the house, too?
Medicine is in my car.
In your car?
Which is stored on your.
And that's, that's allowed?
Yeah.
I would say.
I wish you had a couple of said that.
I, I would, I would think not, because certain medicines have to be kept at temperature.
It's also.
Are, are they narcotic medicines? You know, I mean, painkillers or anything like that? Because that, I, is, is that legal to store in a car? Okay.
You did. The medicine you have at your property, you keep them in your house and in your car?
In the car, yes.
Always in the car?
Mostly, yeah, most in the car.
It's kinda dangerous, isn't it?
It's, it's, I have a camera in front yard, so I can look at it and everything.
Are they painkilling medicines? Let's put it that way. Are, are they medicines for pain, for pain purposes, uh, to, you know, ease the animal's suffering? And are they, are, are they subject to, um, state regulations onto where they're gonna be stored or whatever? That's the question.
She has a license, she must.
You're euthanizing animals, you are storing this maybe in a car, in a neighborhood. This is very bad. Unfortunately, the nobility is losing its privilege.
And, and do you have an examining room, or, or a storage room, or anything in your house for all of these supplies?
No, I'm most, as I said, I store it in the car. Just the, I, the only thing I would take inside is, like, you know, euthanasia solution, because that I have to take it, keep it with me, you know?
And, and you never had a client come to your house at all? Never?
No.
Interesting. Thank you.
Do you, do you have a list of the medicines that, that, that you store in your car? I mean, your attorney.
Most of the time.
Your attorney's not wanting you to say that.
Most of the time, I call it into pharmacy. Most of the medications.
I think we want the world to know what she's got.
Most of the medications, we call it into pharmacy, like, we work with Chewy and 1-800-Pet Meds, and like, you know, most of the time, I just ask the owners to order from there. There'll be few emergency things, like, you know, which we have to keep it.
You're not doing any kind of.
Any other members of the public have any? Come on, come on, more, yes.
For the record, can you state your name?
It's Mary Prizicky again.
Thank you, ma'am.
On this. Use the microphone. Microphone.
Mary, you can't put that on the record.
Okay, no.
You can do that as, 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 as an exhibit if you're an objector, or, I don't.
We're gonna take your phone away from you if you show it to us.
Oh, it's not my phone?
You can't, you can't.
Then you better put it down.
You can ask, you can ask her a question about her advertising.
Do you have, um, an advertisement on a website, or whatever you wanna call this, that actually says you're, I'm four miles away from an, an area? On, on a website? What is on your website? Okay, let's ask that question.
It's my description of what I do.
Need to speak up, please.
That's not the testimony from tonight, anyway.
You'll have to speak into the microphone.
Okay, I just wanna know.
That's not a.
Are there directions on your website to your house? Can I ask that question?
No.
Any other members of the public have any questions of this witness on a testimony given? I hear none and see none. Do you have any other witnesses to bring forward tonight?
No, we'll wait until the next hearing. We ask to be carried, we have no additional number.
Got a date to carry this?
And are we up, are we up against, um, timeline, Nora?
So we're gonna ask for extension.
July 13th.
July 13th. Okay, so the applicant agrees, uh, to carry this case to July 13th without further notice. Ladies and gentlemen, there's no further notice. The notice you're getting of the July 13th meeting is right now, and you will give us whatever extensions are necessary. Yeah, correct? Okay, do I have a motion to that effect?
Full move.
The second?
Second, Eddie.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll see you on July 13th.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we need a five-minute break, guys?
No, that's good.
No? Okay. Application 21104. Can Vini Gobri, Green Estate Realty, 22 Dunndale Road, devariance operator, real estate office out of a home?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members Thomas, Lenny, Williams, Pfeil, and Stern. Courthouse Plaza, Morris Town, New Jersey, on behalf of the applicant, Green Street Realty. I have with me the owner of the property, Ms. Gobri, 22 Dunndale Road. She is a licensed real estate agent seeking approval to run her real estate business out of her home. We do not believe, uh, a use variance is required, that she falls in the definition of a customary home occupation, as is defined in the ordinance.
Ma'am, could you raise your right hand? You swore a firm testimony. You're about to give forth the truth, self of God. And for the record, uh, your name, please?
Can B, C A N D I N I.
And you're the owner of the subject property? You're the owner of the subject property?
Yes.
Right, thank you. You're sworn. You can have.
And can you tell the, uh, Board what you do for a real estate?
Yeah, so I, I'm a licensed real estate broker, and I help people sell and buy homes, residential properties.
And who, do you, uh, do you work with a specific broker?
Uh, it's my own company. Green Estate is my own brokerage.
Okay, uh, and where do you currently occupy? Where do you, um, run your business out of?
Uh, right now, I'm running it from home, 22 Dunndale Road, Morris Plains, New Jersey. That's where, uh, I'm using that office address and everything.
And you do not do any closings at your home, correct?
Yes, and all the closings are at the attorney's office. All the buyer closings are either at the attorney's office or the title company.
Okay, uh, and, um, can you describe for the Board what your specific business, what you do out of your home?
Okay, so most of it is, uh, I am most of the time on road for showings, and for example, for the buyers, you know, they reach out to me, they call me if they need my services. I email them some questionnaire. They get back to me. Most of the conversation is all on the phone. All the documents that I need signature are all sent through e-signature to the buyers. The first meeting is at the very first home that they would like to see the showings start from the first home. So most of the time, I'm actually on the road, rather than at home.
Do any clients or prospective buyers come to your house, uh, to meet with you?
So last year, I did 30 deals, uh, in 2021, and out of those, not a single buyer was actually, came at home at all.
And do you have any advertising at your house?
Right now, no. I did have that, but the township, somebody complained. I wasn't aware of the exact rules and everything. So the township came, knocked at the door, asked me to take the sign down. I immediately pulled the sign down. And that's when I started digging into more into what's allowed, what's not allowed, and started this whole application process.
And what percentage of the home do you use to run the business?
To be exact, 21%.
And, and how do you arrive at that 21%?
Uh, I actually hired a, a professional floor planner who came out. I have the copies of those who came out and did the exact square footage of every inch of the house. And, uh, the great room is what I use, and that's 478 square feet.
And, and the great room, where is it located?
It's on the, it's on the main floor, where the kitchen and the main entrance is. And the total is 2,273 square feet, the whole fourth floor.
And do you use any other rooms in the home to operate the business?
No, it's just the great room that's been used. My, most of the thing is all on the computer, the small screen. That's it. It's all my business generation, my advertising. Everything is through that small computer. Whenever I have sellers, they call me to their house for the meeting, because they want me to see the house, to give them whatever the CMA, or how much the house can be listed and all of that.
And, and the contact and the communication that you have with potential clients, is that done by email and phone primarily?
Yes, mostly actually WhatsApp and email.
What, WhatsApp, can you describe that for the Board?
Uh, WhatsApp is a communication, it's a social app, and most of the communication is through, like, I create a group for the buyer, their spouse, and myself, and most of the communication is through that, actually.
And, and for your business, you don't need any parking available at the home, correct?
Right now, no, because buyers don't, nobody comes to the house. And if required, my driveway can accommodate four cars parallel.
Sorry?
If ever required, my driveways can accommodate four cars, but I don't have clients at house.
Is that because of COVID, or is that because, why?
I, there's no need. Everybody, okay, the thing is, everybody's busy, especially I get these young buyers that I have, most of my clientele. Y'all are.
Can you describe, if there's an actual closing, it does not take place at your house, correct?
Yes, it's either the attorney's office, because attorney's a mandatory in New Jersey, or the title company's office.
So how is, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what type of business she's running out of her house. She's got a phone, a computer, a couple of other office equipment. There is, there's no, and as long as she doesn't have people coming to the house, she doesn't have a sign, right?
She's not having a sign.
No people, she'd agree not to have people come to the house, right?
Why is she here?
Oh, but.
Why is she here?
There's probably 500 people doing this.
She was given a violation.
For what? Right, anybody?
Because of the sign?
Uh, because of the sign that I had, but then I want to put a small sign, because that's required by the Real Estate Commission. That's why I'm here.
It's for the Real Estate Commission.
So I comply with those laws as well.
And when I look at the definition of a customary home occupation, it talks about the customary home occupation may include, but not limited to, a home office for personal use by an accountant, an architect, a dressmaker, a tailor, an engineer, a land survey, a lawyer, a professional planner.
Yeah, but you're talking about a situation here, and I'll tell you, personal, personal experience, okay? There was a woman over, I had an office on Bevillbrook Road, and I had single room offices. The office was like 10 by 12, okay? And the real estate agent put two desks in there, and she hung her licenses on the wall, and she put a little sign outside, and she never came to the office. She did all of her business, but she had a business address, because she had to have the sign, and she had to have a place to hang the licenses. That's what's required by the, the real, the real estate committee. So I, as a CPA, could operate out of my house and don't need a sign, right? A lawyer probably doesn't need a sign.
A lawyer needs a sign.
He need, you have to have, if you're gonna, well, you, but you would have people come.
If I was gonna run a business out of my home and see clients at my house, I would need a sign.
But no, I'm saying, if you're not gonna see anybody there, if I'm, if I never saw, saw anybody at my house, which, if you came into my house in my one bedroom, I have a complete computer setup.
A lot of people complain, so.
But, but, but I'm not operating a business, because there's no sign and nobody comes to my house.
Mr. Chairman, can I, just one thing? So the whole. You wanna comply to the real estate people, you need a sign someplace, right?
Yeah, some small sign.
There's a thousand, thousands of square foot of office space in this town right now. It'll cost you a dollar 480 a week to rent. Do what Mr. Iarkin is suggesting, have a little place someplace, put your business sign there, then you don't need to be us. Then you don't need us.
It even got to the point where this woman didn't want the office anymore, and she used to pay me $50 a month to hang her, to hang her licenses in, in one of my offices behind the door.
You don't have any employees, correct?
Nope, not that I'm the only operating.
You just need someplace to hang your sign and have the business happen, right?
Yes, and I wanna use my home address for my business address and all the communication, everything, and I got the pictures too.
If you look at the definition, it also talks about a limousine owner using his or her home to make appointments, to pick up passengers via telephone and/or electronic mail. She's sitting at home, you know, doing emails and making phone calls.
There's no mention of real estate office in that home occup, home occupation. I wrote that on.
References about eight professions that all could be doing real estate work.
Could be doing. Associating with the process.
What does a planner do? What does an engineer do? They're all referenced there.
You have to comply with. You're not listening. It doesn't say real estate. It says a whole bunch of, doctors, lawyers, and Indian chiefs, but it doesn't say real estate.
You know why he knows?
They're all doing the same.
You know why he knows?
Why the audience hasn't been updated, who the hell knows? Simple as that.
That's a good point.
But it's not there. So your, your outset was you were gonna appeal the decision. Now you're approaching a devariance, but you've got. Let me finish, let me finish. You've had some suggestions on how to get. You've had some suggestions on how to get around the problem.
I'd ask that we not go to a vote then and then we carry it and if I have to get a planner.
My, my question would be...
I don't think you need a planner.
I think you need a planner. I think you got alternatives you can do.
You need to be able to put a sign someplace.
And I have some pictures too. Can I show those or? Because I have a separate entrance and everything for my great room, which is also the requirement.
That's not the issue here.
That gets, that gets back to the devariance.
The issue is your neighbors don't wanna see a, a commercial sign in front of your house.
And you need a commercial sign to get the license.
That they have to see a commercial sign outside, okay?
What if, what if you operate without a sign?
No, I'm, I can still do with a customary...
She needs an address for the Real Estate Commission.
Yeah, and she should be able to find one.
I don't think you need a sign, correct?
No, the, the sign is a requirement, a small sign is also okay and I went...
But you can go find, you can go rent...
But then, if I have a property and I want to use my space, why can't I?
Because you're in a residential zone. You're not in a business zone.
But even the R one M zoning...
It's a R one.
You better stay there, cause zoning and...
Right, R one M zoning does allow customary home occupation, right? R one M zoning does allow customary home occupation.
It's an R one M.
That's a, that's a, that was an old B and E zone.
R one M.
It has nothing to do with commercial.
Well, I'm just telling you, I think that's why we've confirmed where she is.
You're here because you had a sign out, you got a complaint. You cannot have a sign advertising your business, doing your business and your home address, period, in the zone you're living in.
That kind of business?
That, that, that's an R one zone.
So even if it meets all the customary home occupation, uh, the rules and regulations?
You cannot comply with your real estate licensing board's criteria to have a sign using your home address as your business, right?
Right, but, hold on, one thing, the customary home occupation does allow a small sign, which meets the requirement, then why not?
I'm done.
I don't think it can be anywhere.
That's a professional...
Are you in the powder mill? I put the, I put the mountain?
Yes, yes.
You don't, you should look in your, when that place was built, there was a big concern about homes being come...
And there are so many others that's operating.
I don't know if there's a deed restriction that runs that whole development. The commercial part is on Route Ten, then you have the townhouses and the single family homes. I'm not so sure that there is a deed restriction on those that they cannot, regardless of